I'm going to open the public forum. At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The City Council may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to comment on an item not on the agenda?
Mike Kirkley, 172 Badger Street. I kind of wanted to find out what the status is with the compliance of the two wrecking yards in Sutter Creek. The other day, when I was traveling about on my motorcycle, I noticed that another vehicle was brought into the one off Old Amador Road on a trailer, that there's more vehicles coming in. I haven't seen any leave. And maybe you can give an update on that, or some kind of status of where we're at with the compliance. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else have a comment not on the agenda? Okay. That takes us to the City Manager's Report. Tom?
Yep. Good evening, Council. Just a quick update. I will have to get an update on code enforcement. We have been working on those junkyards, and I don't have the latest information, but I'll get that Mr. Kirkley requested. Just some updates, you know, looking at our city priorities. In terms of roadways, I'd say we're still looking for applicants to the Local Tax Oversight Committee. So if anybody's interested, please send me your name. We're looking for a group of five people that want to participate on that. Time commitment is fairly limited. And then ACTC is starting up its process to request updates for road projects, and it'll go over several months until, I think, August 1st. But we'll be working with our engineering team to update our road projects. In terms of the budget, again, we're continuing to work on this integration of a new financial system. Mason's done a lot of work on the utility billing side. So again, we expect it to take probably till July 1st to be complete, but we continue to make good progress there. And then in terms of the audit, I think almost all the heavy lifting is done. We're down to last few questions, so we should be getting a draft of the audit pretty soon. And then a lot of work's been going on the wastewater side. Our final individual water balance was submitted to the Water Board on February 28th. The next step is to work with Ione and CDCR on a joint water balance, and that's already Dan LaFontaine and I attended Progressive Design Build Class just to learn kind of more details about that kind of project. And we've been meeting with wastewater treatment plant construction companies, and we have several visits scheduled. This one is a package MBR plant that we're going to go see on Wednesday. But you see those kind of trailers, those are complete wastewater treatment plants and kind of modules, and you can add more modules as your need increases.
Where is that, Tom?
It's a place called Chicken Ranch. Do you know where that is?
Down.
Jamestown.
By Jamestown.
Okay.
Yeah. Cool. Then in terms of economic development, you know, we have our grant application into Sierra Jobs First. I don't remember if I told you guys, they got so many applicants, they kind of changed their awards process. There was supposed to be a second round of pitching, and they basically are just reviewing all the applications, and they're going to select participants. So we're waiting to hear what happens there. What's on the agenda later tonight is a preview of the Gold Rush. We're near complete on that application. We've been working on a local hazard mitigation plan with the county. And then, so Michael Rock is here tonight. We've been meeting on use of development impact fees in kind of discussion of a process for dispersing some of those fees to the cities for parks projects. And then it took a while, but I wanted to highlight that the cemetery repairs are complete. This wall in the first picture had completely collapsed, and actually, the quality of the construction's quite nice, so. Good. And then in terms of upcoming events, the Foundry's having a fundraising dinner coming up on March 15th behind the Solar Doors, happening March 22nd. And then there's the Earth Day 5K race, and then keep saying until April 26th, but the duck race is back, so that's coming up. And then in terms of your agendas, next council meeting will be going over the long-range financial forecast. It's kind of a lead into getting to our budget. We are also retaining Hydroscience as our wastewater engineering firm, so there'll be their contracts on the agenda. And then future meetings, we're looking at we debatement ordinance, a discussion about an empty storefront ordinance, the RFQ for the wastewater plant, and we have a couple of big RFPs, one for wastewater collection system repairs, so fixing the INI problem, and then also the Henderson Dam repair. And then the draft budget will be coming up.
Hey, Tom?
Yep.
Fixing the INI, did you always anticipate doing an RFP and bringing somebody else in to help do that?
Yeah. So if you remember, we did that pipe busting project last year.
Right, yeah.
It'd be those kinds of projects.
Okay.
Firm will come in.
Great. Thank you.
And then just a heads up, we may cancel the May 5th meeting unless there's a really critical item, because I'm going to be out of town on that Monday. And that's my update.
Council, did you have any questions for Tom? Okay. The public have any questions at this point? You want to get into the rest of the agenda? Okay. Mason is married. We're going to go ahead and skip Item A, the proclamation for Mary Ann, until she's able to attend the meeting, and go to Item B, a presentation from Michael Rock at ACRA. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Michael Rock, General Manager for Amador County Recreation Agency, and I try to get around to all the cities who are members of ACRA at least once a year to update you on the activities of our recreation and park programming. As Tom mentioned, there's now a considerable fund for development impact fee type projects. The Technical Advisory Committee has met twice, and we will make recommendations to the ACRA Board and ultimately to the Board of Supervisors for the old NEXUS money, which is money that's been sitting around for a long time. That is for development impact fee type projects, new parks and new recreational activities or facilities that meet the definition of the impact of development for newer areas and growth. So we're working on both the old NEXUS and the new NEXUS impact fee funds, which total about $1.6 million that has to be then split amongst all the cities and the county. So that's in progress, and eventually, Sutter Creek will have a project that comes out of that money. The 49er Run in Amador City is May 3rd for anybody interested in the 5K or the 10K run. And then in terms of our youth programming, our spring camp starts on March 10th at Amador High School, 4K through 6 graders. We are doing a little bit different enrichment-type programming. We're doing project-based and some academic-based programming. We are not babysitting the kids anymore. That doesn't work. They get bored, and we need to keep them busy every second of every day. So we are revamping our curriculum. We also have a summer fun days for eight weeks, also at Amador High School, for the same age group K through 6, including the swimming pool and field trips, and again, enrichment programming and project-based learning. And we're really looking forward to changing the way we've done that summer program. We still have our after-school program here in Sutter Creek at the elementary school campus through the end of the school year. And we have added a bunch of new programming for kids and adults. We have added a ceramics class for kids that are 10 years or older in Jackson and in Plymouth. These are four-week sessions, also open to all children in Amador County. We've also added a kids' kickboxing class in Jackson, starting April 14th. And we've resurrected our swim lesson program. So this coming summer, we will offer swim lessons, both group swim lessons, one week, or group swim lessons for two weeks. We'll also offer private lessons and parent and top class for two weeks. So that's a new thing in the sense that we were not able to do it the last couple of years, and that is coming back. On the adult programming side, we now have a men's basketball league. It's quite a few teams. It's also at Amador High School. We have a watercolor class, March 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th. It's in Sutter Creek. We have a cooking class, which has been extremely popular, which is in Sutter Creek at the old historic school.
The Grims.
Yeah. And we do offer pickleball every Sunday in Jackson and every Friday in Amador City. We also have bingo in Jackson and in Pioneer and in Ione. And we are open to any other new programming that residents would like. Please call or email us so that we can constantly review and update both the youth and adult programming. So that's my report for tonight, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hi, Michael. Thank you for being here. I had one question on the allocation of the impact fees.
Yes.
Is there an existing process, how that's handled? Or do you have to come up with that every time?
Well, yes and no. So there's an exact amount of money that is put into the fund for each part of the county. So in other words, if someone is charged a development impact fee in Drytown, it's a very specific area, it will be tallied in under Drytown. If that project happened in Sutter Creek, we know exactly how much money was paid by Sutter Creek Properties into that fund. The difficulty comes in where the projects may be and how much those projects are. So matching dollar for dollar where the money went in versus where the projects are is the reason for the Technical Advisory Committee and the Board of Directors of ACRA and the County Board of Supervisors and the City Councils. So ultimately, it becomes a policy decision for the elected officials at the end of the day. The TAC is organized to make those recommendations to those governing bodies, but yes, there's going to be some horse trading, if you will, because it depends on the cost and scope of every project. But it also depends on, you have to meet the legal definition of spending the money. There has to be an impact that creates the necessity to, like, make a building bigger or to build a brand-new park, or whatever the case may be. So the law is very specific and very unyielding when it comes to how you spend the money. So we have to come up with projects that meet the definition of the law to the T, and that's not always that easy in areas where there's very little development. So that's the challenge. The development in the counties in Ione, and it's in scattered areas of the county, and that's where theoretically the development impact fee money should go, because that's where the most impact is to those communities of new residences and new commercial activity.
Thank you.
I have a question, and maybe we'll be talking about this at our next meeting, Michael, but the old NEXUS fees, is that, were those established differently than their new fees?
Yeah, they were, yes.
And is there a timeline for those old NEXUS fees to be spent?
Well, yeah, we need to spend them like now. They were created before ACRA existed, so prior to 2003, the county collected the fees on behalf of everybody else. And after 2003, ACRA collected the fees for parks and recreation development impact fees. So the old NEXUS is prior to ACRA, and the new NEXUS, all that money goes directly to ACRA.
Okay. Thank you.
Did anyone in the public have a question for Mr. Rock? Okay. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
We have two sets of minutes to approve, both on February 18th. Probably ought to take them, well, we'll see. If there's no edits, we can go ahead and take them at the same time.
I'd like one correction on the first meeting, the priorities meeting, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
It's on page nine. It says that when I discuss looking at the trend of police department costs close to 50% to 60% of the general fund, actually, in my numbers that I use, that should be 60% The 45% was from information from 2021. So, and the 60% to 65% is the 2024.
Got that, Tom?
Yep. Got that.
Anybody else?
Just for the record, Claire, I did send Tom some modifications. He's.
Just typos.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just one very minor, maybe you already covered it. The vote to approve on the second minute, set of minutes, on number six, on the vote to approve the council meetings of February 3rd, that vote was 304, not 40, excuse me, 302, not 402. Just minor.
Thank you.
If nothing else, I'll hear a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who was the second?
Julia. We've got two items on our consent agenda. It's already been.
Do you want to do the minutes from?
Oh, I think we did them both.
Well, I can vote on one, but I can't vote on the other because I didn't attend.
Oh, okay. Scratch that. That last vote, Tom, was on the special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting.
A second.
Oh, it's the second meeting? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the second meeting.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and one abstention. That's Julia. Okay. Takes us to Item 7, the consent agenda. It's already been indicated that we're going to pull B. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve Item A on consent?
Sorry, who's pulling B?
Combo, I think. Dan, Julia, and I, so far.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve 7A on the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7B is the updated pool management agreement.
So you guys can pull it, but what if we hear it at the end after the other three items?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that. Or even at a future meeting. I think we have a lot of questions on it, too, so maybe we can submit our questions and bring it back.
Well, let's see what time it is, and then you guys can make a motion to continue it later.
So we're going to remove it from the consent agenda and maybe hear it later. That takes us to 9, the administrative agenda, and a joint session with the Planning Commission and the Council. So if the Planning Commission wants to come up and sit next to us for this part.
No, I mean, I think it's a good practice to try to do this once a year, but it's really for you guys to have a conversation with each other.
We did do this a couple years ago. Mike and Jim and Julia and I might have been the only ones here for that. And it was when we were going over updates to the zoning code, and that item in that instance didn't go very far, but when we all had a discussion, I felt like a lot of consensus came out of it, and I think it is a good exercise. Both bodies can kind of guide how this goes. I had a couple of thoughts. I did want to quickly go over the city priorities that the Council and the staff has approved last month. I believe you're probably all familiar with that. That's to develop a comprehensive plan to maintain and improve the roadways and execute against it. So we've recently approved our CIP, that of course is a giant catalog of road improvements, but at least we have something that we could start off of. We passed Measure P, so we have some revenue to start to spend towards roads. The Council is very committed to spending that Measure P money on road improvements, but it's still, it's going to continue to be in a priority for us. We have to identify how we're going to decide which roads are fixed. We have some decisions to make, big roads or more small roads first, how to do it completely, get grants. So it's still in process. Item 2, priority 2, was to run the city with a sustainable budget, considering revenue generation and cost cutting. Of course, we're always still working on that. Measure P is going to impact that, but also, the City Finance Department has gone through, and we've initiated a new ERP, I think it's called, to update our budgeting, our whole financial system. It's going to be easier to track and, you know, improve the accountability on where we're spending our money. Item 3 is the, address our wastewater treatment needs. You know, that never goes away here. All I'll say about that is it's not always, it's not necessarily in the Planning Commission's purview, but it's always on the minds of everyone in Sutter Creek. And last month, Dan LaFontaine did a great update for us on where we are on that. So if you haven't seen it, I suggest that the Commission looks at that. And number 4 is nurturing economic development, and that's kind of the open-ended one for all of us. You know, that includes improving the economic opportunities for the people that live here and do business here. And that can, you know, include bolstering our tourism, programs in our community to improve everybody's life, but it can also include developing new things, be it business, residences, new programs. So that's probably the city priority where the Planning Commission, in my mind, comes in most. Also, you guys had kind of a pre-session where you identified some of your concerns, and this is a great opportunity to go through those. There's a couple of them I just wanted to give updates. Several of you brought up the development impact fees and whether or not they were appropriate. We are in the middle of a new NEXUS study, and after the NEXUS study comes a review of those fees. So that will be coming to us. So I don't want to get too into the weeds on that, because we're going to go there. Also, zoning updates is another thing that is in process. It fell down the list a little bit, but they are coming. And Erin can probably let us know the appropriate way for us to give her feedback on what zoning updates we'd like to be considered before we get to that point. Also, the staff has developed a TAC committee to improve the procedure of projects, any kinds of projects, proposals coming to the city. And that's where all of our different departments look at an application together, rather than at pinballing around between them all, which costs the city and everybody else time and money. And it's seemed to be rather successful so far. Everybody can sit down in one room and look at something and bounce their considerations off of each other and then reply. And also, there are several programs that are required in the housing element that are yet to be implemented, and I think a lot of the things that we're all considering in our roles on our respective boards can be addressed in some of those programs. So that, I think, is next on the agenda or coming up here pretty soon. And hopefully, you guys can stick around and see where we could be of value in that. Beyond that, I thought I'd kind of open it up, and hopefully, everybody can at least say something about, you know, really, your primary objective in your role on whichever of these two boards you're on. So if anyone would care to start?
I'll say.
Go for it, Dan.
You know, I'm happy that we're getting together to talk about, with our planning partners here. I think that in Sutter Creek, in the 45 years that I've lived here, you know, meaningful, potentially viable housing projects, for instance, you know, they're few and far between. So to the extent that we can each understand our roles and our goals, and not just our goals around this table, because we're not the ones who make the decisions for the town, the people of the town make those decisions. And so what we want to do is make sure that the information, the temperature is taken of the folks who live here in terms of, what is it that you believe we need and want so that we can best do our job, providing input, of course, and move these processes along. I think that Claire mentioned, we had recently developed a capital improvement plan, and when we did that work, it became pretty clear to me that there's a whole lot of stuff on that plan that unless there's some kind of development, is never going to get done. So I wouldn't say I'm pro-development or anti-development. I'm somewhere in the middle, where I want to understand what's being proposed all the time, as do my colleagues around the table, but then be able to process that information professionally, quickly, so that the folks who live here today, and our children and our grandchildren, can enjoy this town as we've enjoyed it, you know, living here. I think when I look back in those 45 years and I see what's happened in terms of these potential developments, I'm not sure we've always done great work in that space. I think we can probably improve our processes and our ability to, I don't know, to manage these opportunities is how I see it. And I just wanted to share that. I'm glad we're having this conversation. I look forward to learning and seeing what we can do.
Thank you, Dan. Would anyone from either board care to go next? Jim?
I'll just say, I agree with a lot of things you said, Dan, I appreciate it. And also, take this opportunity to thank the members of our. And also take this opportunity to thank the members of our planning commission. They do a tremendous amount of work. And I don't think people realize how much work that they do. And it's a lot of technical stuff and really do appreciate their volunteerism. And because it's a lot. Thank you.
I'd just like to express, I guess, gratitude that we can all come and we can all be at the same table. And hopefully this answers a lot of this process or what we're about to do and where we're about to explore. Will alleviate, you know, angst of who does what and that we're able to work together. So I'm all about, you know, the communication coming to the table. We all use the same language and I'm hoping that we all come together with the same goals for our city.
Anyone from the planning commission? Come on, Mike.
I can go if not. I'd just like to thank the appointment. I mean, it's been an honor. It's been a lot of fun just to learn so much about this community and especially those technical aspects. And that's one of the main things that I like and push for as much as anything. I know if other members agree, it's getting the zoning appropriate, logical, as much as anything. So when you buy a piece of property, you know what it's supposed to be zoned for. And if there's a change that needs to happen, it comes before us and we've got to talk about it a little more in depth. And that's what I really enjoy doing.
Anybody else grab a mic? Lucy? Mike's grabbing a mic.
You can see in the staff report, some of my comments when we had our other meeting. And I, one of it was my concerns about annexations to the city. And I guess I've been around long enough and been along, involved with planning and general plan. I was involved in the very, the general plan in 1990. I've been on the planning commission then, a short stint on the city council. And it's, and I think it would be very helpful for the city council and the planning commissioners, the newer planning commissioners, to really look at the inventory of what we have approved over the years. And I can summarize a little bit. We had the Powder House project. I think Pete Fox was on the planning commission with me years and years ago. And he became the proponent of that, owned the property, and it got approved. And then it went dormant. And then we had, obviously, Crestview. Part was built, the other half was never built. It's in the city limits. And if you add those two together, based on what they, what they're zoned for, you'd be surprised how many units could be built within those two projects. And then in addition to that, we have Golden Hills unit, whatever it would be, never got developed and is also on, in the city limits. Then when you add all those together, the city decided to annex 1,100 acres, what is now was the Gold Rush project. I was involved in that as a planning commissioner. And that is now an infill project. That's been, that's been annexed to the city with a lot of promises to the city. And all those promises went away. And I think that history needs to be, the people of Sutter Creek need to be aware of that history. And I think it's important, as we move forward with development projects, that we hold people accountable for what they're promising. And then the other, one of my other comments were, you know, cleanup the zoning. And Claire says we're working on that. We had a, it was kind of frustrating. We had a grant to do some general plan update and we had to spend the grant right away. And we couldn't get to some of these things and doing cleanup stuff. It was very frustrating because over the years you see this stuff and it never does get cleaned up. It always becomes a lower priority. And I know it's expensive to deal with that. You have to have consultants involved, but it needs to be done. And, you know, a lot of things I'm looking at is not infrastructure per se, although that plays in. And then the other one I've, over many public meetings, is tried to point out to the city council, and I know you're all aware of that, is that we get so little sale of property tax from development. A $700,000 home built tomorrow in Sutter Creek generates $280 a year in property taxes to the city. And that's about 4% of the 1% value of the home. The county gets 14%. And they want to charge $850 a dog to hook up and take out of the city. So I think some negotiation needs to go on. So I'm looking at the zoning and the economic viability. I think our general plan that I worked on many, many years ago says new development has to carry its weight. It has to be, it can't be a burden financially on the city. So I think the other thing, any new development you need to look at is community facilities districts. And I know the city is open to that, city council is open to that. And other communities have done it. There's many, that would be a good presentation to the city council at a later meeting. There's great PowerPoint presentations on that. Gives you a clear idea on how to set those up and what they do for the city. But I think it's very important that you have all your ducks in a row. We've had a slow amount of development for a long period of time. You have to have your ducks in a row when they come forward with stuff. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mike. If no one else grabbing the microphone, I'll go ahead now. Oh, you ready?
Yep, I was, sorry, I was pondering. You caught me off guard. For all of you that aren't aware, I'm the newest commissioner. This is my fifth month, so I'm still very much a novice. And I do spend a lot of time reviewing the codes. I see, from my position being here, is making sure that the projects that come before the commission do adhere to the community code and the plan. And then an important part is also flagging where parts of that code may be outdated or flawed. So it can be more transparent to the community and more representative of what we're hearing and getting feedback from. So that's where I stand, not really just making sure that we can move forward and really listen to what, what needs to be done and what can be done for the community.
Well, thank you all for your service and also for the thoughtfulness in this document here. Yeah, and I really like the direction with regard to the infill. I think we're really blessed to have a walkable town that was built before the automobile. And if we can keep it growing and retain that, I think that will be, that'd be a great thing as for generations to come. And with the development pressure that's already coming. And I appreciate Mike's comment on the infill and the lots that are already available that could be built up. And yeah, and Tommy, your comment on the developer accountability is really essential because we've seen, as Mike also mentioned, a couple of projects go through that weren't the, benefits were on the back end. And we need to make sure that those things get done and don't just drop off after the project is almost finished. So thank you again. I'd like to kind of reiterate what Dan and Mike both said. I think that we don't have a whole lot of really good examples before us in our city or really our county, both business and residential development and other projects that were done well. And Mike's absolutely right that we do need to be aware of our history and learn from our history. But things in our future cannot be held accountable to pay for our mistakes in our history. We need to be prepared. And my objective out of this is to have us be educated and empowered to ensure if there is some kind of project, and I'm not just talking about development, if there's something proposed to either of our boards and it seems to fit where it would benefit our community. It's something that the people here want and we need to be able to take that pulse. Then we need to ensure that it pays its own way as far as any new impact on the city. And then also continues to support itself like a CFD, which I think that we're all understanding we would implement in any big future programming. But I do think that we get caught in the black and white. So in terms of annexation that Mike brought up. Yeah, we do have a lot of inventory of developments that didn't happen, but they didn't happen. So if something new comes before us, the person who's bringing it owns a piece of property, they have. And, you know, something else is really irrelevant, except for the fact that we can learn from those. But I do think that when we're looking through the housing element and these programs that we need to implement, that's somewhere that we may be able to spur growth towards there. What Susan said about, you know, having a walkable city, and we're blessed to have that. We have a walkable downtown. We don't have a walkable city. I would say more than half of our residents cannot safely walk to downtown. You know, so those are things that we need to ensure as we look at these things. But I do think overall, we all are, have the same objective in sitting here. I think that we're also all volunteers, except for maybe Lucy, who's an engineer. We don't have the technical.
Geologist.
Geologist.
Very different to engineering.
We don't have the, you know, we need the support from staff, the technical support from staff to make the best decisions. And then I also think that what I hoped to come out of here is, you know, we can empower or ask the planning commission to give us more feedback on these proposed projects when they come back to us, rather than just yeses and nos. You know, tell us where the holes are, tell us where the concerns are. Tell the project applicant what, you know, we need to see or would like to see or want to know before it comes back. I just had a couple, two more things. And yeah, good point, Claire, with regards to there are neighborhoods that aren't so walkable. I meant more so the downtown and then the immediate area that is, and I would like to keep that. And then, you know, if we were able to encourage Crestview, that second part to be developed, those houses would certainly be walkable and to join the community or the housing that isn't that. I think that is a great imperative for us. And then one thing I just wanted to mention with regard to Commissioner Makin's observations, as far as the mix of housing types, I think that going forward, it might be beneficial for everyone to look at some projects that are a little higher density. We all know that housing is going up quickly. And I have young 20 to 30-year-old children that are wondering about their ability to buy homes at any point. And it would be great for the town to have a wider demographic and have a ability for, you know, first homes or apartments too. So that's something I think we should consider.
I just had one more thought on the, not to beat it to death, but the whole notion of annexation versus infill. Because partially, it seems like it's a philosophical discussion. But, and I know we're not here to talk about specific projects during this conversation. But, you know, there, I'm looking for more kind of legal, technical guidance with regard to what are we obligated or not obligated to do? Particularly around annexation. Because on the one hand, I fully understand, Mike, what you're talking about and others. That if we have an inventory of, you know, I'll just make it up, 100 lots scattered about, you know, that's great. And if someone comes in and has something else in mind and it's, you know, they're not going to build one here and one here, we got to know, well, what's, what about their property rights? You know, do they have the right to, for annexation? What, and I'm just, I'm still confused by all that and I need clarity going forward. And so Derek, part of that is to you as our city attorney and just to kind of, you know, because it makes me scratch my head.
I would agree, Dan, that the, I don't believe that the existence of infill, availability of infill lots automatically precludes the ability or the consideration of annexation.
Let me, please, Mike, please.
I think, I think the general plan has a little preamble on that too. I mean, Erin's a planner. I mean, the only background I have in planning, I've been a planning commissioner at the county level and the city level for a long time. But it seems to me it's good planning to not keep annexing more ground when you haven't developed what you've already done. And we're not talking hundreds. We're talking probably 2,000 available.
You mentioned Powder House. That map is gone.
No, no, the map's gone. The land is still in the same limits and it's zone residential.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
The map's gone. You're right. But it does have a zoning that allows you to put a kind of a density on what could be built there. And then you, you've got 1,000 acres of Gold Rush.
Right.
And now you're saying, well, we haven't annexed enough. Read your preamble in your general plan. Maybe you'll be enlightened a little bit on that.
Let me, let me address this briefly. So the legal standard is you are a city council. You're not LAFCO. So we're not here, your job and planning commissioners as well. Our job here at the city government is not to decide annexation issues. But can you look at growth within your city? And can you look at whether it's wise to grow in certain areas or areas that are slated to be part of our city, that are in a sphere of influence but are not yet a part of our city? Is that within your ability to consider in a legislative capacity? Yes. You are a city council. Well, first of all, those of you who are planning commissioners will make recommendation to the council. So you will be acting in a recommending capacity and you'll be looking at a policy question. Those of you who are on the council will be able to then make the policy determination, the legislative determination. Does this application fit with your specific plan, your general plan, your zoning? So there is an ability to look at growth and where you want to grow within the city. But I need to caution that that's not the same thing as do we want to annex or do we not want to annex? That's, I know I'm splitting some hairs here. That's what I do as a lawyer. So the policy question of growth, is this a good place to grow? Is this what we need at this time in the city? By all means, it's something you can and should consider. But you need to make an upper, eventually you'll have to make an up or down vote, either as a recommending authority in the planning commission or as the approving authority at the council level. Do you want this or do you not? And technically, you're not deciding annexation issues as part of that.
I wanted to talk with regard to the general plan and then thank you for that insight. And with regard to our policy, I feel like there's an imperative to keep Sutter Creek Sutter Creek, that we would retain this identity of the small town surrounded by a rural area and not go into a suburban sprawl kind of scenario. So, and I-
So, and I think, Mike, would that be the general plan speaks to that?
I think it's, you know, I haven't read it in a while, it's been updated a couple of times, but I think generally it says the same thing is that you, and it, it's got some weasel words in there. We encourage infill before we do additional annexation. And I agree, you know, you, you have property owners that didn't develop, the rancherina now owns Powderhouse, Jim's familiar with that project probably when it was approved and, and it had open space, it had multiple, it had townhouse, all kinds of, you know, unique open space areas, actually a pretty designed project. Now it's, it's used for cattle grazing, as is most of Gold Rush, it's still a cattle ranch. So you're right, you have no control over what those properties, and I know Crestview two is on the market, Golden Hills is on the market. You're right. Whether anybody buys them and wants to propose anything, I don't know. Even if somebody buys it and gets a tentative map, they don't have to, they don't have to develop it, they can get the map approved and flip it again. We've seen that too. So all I'm saying is you're, you try to encourage infill, I think that's good planning, if I'm not mistaken. I didn't go to a planning school, but it seems like that's like planning 101. You know, build out what you got before you start thinking about annexing things. So just keep that in mind, that's what I think about all the time.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Susan, hopefully we can meld those. My, my question, and this may involve Aaron with the housing report and the housing element. On there, it, there's the picture in the, in the statement, in the graph, that unless the Danco project gets funded and built, any additional housing that we move forward with would be in that middle income and we would be pretty much, I don't know if the word compliance or out of compliance, or we would be violating our housing plan. Is that correct? So how, how far can we really discuss other than coming to an agreement of infill versus annexation? And I'm just doing a mental straw poll here, but how far can we really discuss actual projects that almost like a chicken and an egg thing?
Yeah, and unfortunately there is the disconnect between what the state says they want a community to produce in housing units, the RENA, the regional housing needs allocation. So they come out and say each juris, each county gets a number and then it is split into the jurisdictions and they say, you know, you need X a number of above moderate, moderate, low income and very low, extremely low. But cities are not in the business of building housing typically and so it's very hard for us to control what a developer wants to do with their project. And you, you know, we, we have an application, we have an entitlement for, what is it, 45 extremely low income units with Danco and we don't really have many other incentives in our zoning ordinance to incentivize people to build affordable housing, any type, additional consent concessions, we have a density bonus that will give you some concessions, but you're right, there, there may be a big gap if Danco doesn't happen.
Is, are there consequences, I'm just scenario, not saying that I agree with this plan or not, are there consequences if Danco doesn't get approved and the planning commission and the council would move forward on approving developments that are the middle, the upper middle?
So the good thing is Danco has been approved by the city and now it's back in the developer's hands. So we have done our portion of entitling the project. Obviously we want the developer to then build the project, but if.
Why don't we talk more generally to the specific project? But I think the question is what if we don't get the low income?
If we don't meet our RENA numbers and that, yeah, the HCD could come after us. It, if we are showing or if it, developers can, Derek, maybe you can help a little bit more with this. So what for our consequences for not meeting RENA numbers?
We face action by housing and community development. I mean, there are things they can do to penalize us.
Think SB 35 could kick in.
Yeah, there are certain, you know, rights that developers can invoke that may take away our discretion to limit or to condition or to approve their development. It's a little nebulous because we don't have anything pending. We don't have what we call builder remedy applications that you see throughout the Bay Area and Los, and Southern California. But there are things that, there are consequences that if we, if we don't provide for a housing stock.
Now, when you say don't provide, is the fact that Danco was approved, could that be considered a provision? And if the commission and council move forward on an infill development, we would still be in compliance?
Well, we, we can meet, we don't need this particular project that we're going to be looking at tonight necessarily to meet our housing obligations. Others can come forward. So I don't want to give the impression that we must do this, but I also, we don't have a whole lot pending right now.
So what I, what I, I might have not said, asked clearly, so what I'm understanding from Aaron, that we have approved the Danco to move forward. Now the, the ball's in their court in terms of funding and moving forward.
Correct.
So if they're not moving forward, but the, but the movement of the council and the commission is to move forward with other infill developments, any infill development.
So maybe some of this, we should talk about it on the next item, but again, there's thresholds for below mark, low income and that's defined, so very low income, low income.
Correct.
That's what Danco is. Other projects are market projects, those don't count for the low income, right? So when you look at the HCD report, you have to look at your production by category. So does that help? We don't have any other low income developers that are talking to the city at this point, essentially are doing subsidized housing, right?
All I want, all I want to hear is yes or no, we can still move forward with an infill project and be in compliance with our housing.
That's what I'm trying to tell you, infill has nothing to do with low income or not.
No, I know.
Okay, so it wouldn't help us there, it would help us with market rate housing in terms of ones or twos for every infill lot, you know?
So the fact that we've, we've approved it, the Danco?
No, that has to be built to count.
Okay, okay, that's what I was asking.
So yeah, we don't get credit for the approvals.
Back to, back to the broader scope of, you know, the two commissions.
Hold on real quick, can I just ask one thing? So what's the interplay between the legal obligations and the project funding that we don't really have control over whether or not it gets built?
I think that was what Aaron was trying to get to, that the state has tried to put teeth into these RENA requirements on cities, but cities don't do development, so we risk getting penalized for something we don't really control. Some cities are putting in all kinds of incentives to make it more and more attractive, to try to make it happen, you know? But that's kind of the disconnect in this housing element cycle.
Right.
So back to the broader objectives out of both commissions and after hearing, you know, what everybody's had to say, I would like to move further away from the guidelines of, you know, whether we consider infill or annexation. I mean, there's too many black and whites. I would like to empower both of these bodies to be able to consider any project on its merits for the community. You know, I grew up here too. And when we talked about some of these projects that had been approved, the concern was all of the hills around the bowl of the community were going to be full of houses and we wanted to leave some of them empty. You know, by that note, maybe you would want to do some of this stuff up on the hill. I don't know, you know, we need to be able to consider each one and we need to know, to be empowered to know if they were to come in, how we don't make the mistakes of the past, how we ensure that they're paying for whatever new impact they're going to have on our community and how to ensure that, Mike's absolutely right about property taxes, you know, as time goes on, they continue to pay their way. And it is very vague, you know, the, the developer fees had been explained to me at one point and I think it makes sense if somebody's buying a lot in town, right? That they're basically paying in to their piece of the system that those of us who live here have already put in place. Now, if it's a larger scale development and something new is required in terms of our infrastructure to, to accommodate it, then, you know, that's a different consideration. But I would like us to all know how to ensure if we feel that something is what our community wants and needs and would benefit both the people that live here and the city itself in terms of economics and our quality of life, how do we ensure we are covered?
Claire, I think that's a, you know, a great segue perhaps to the next part of our discussion tonight where we're going to be educating ourselves more on this potential project coming up and what the rules are and what the rules aren't. Is that, does that make sense or are you going in a different direction and I'm misunderstanding what you're saying?
No, I, I think that's what I'm saying and I think that, I guess I'm trying to indicate to the planning commission that when you give something back to us, you know, that, that's what I want to know.
Right. How it's meeting or not meeting and.
How it's meeting or not meeting our needs benefiting, you know, our citizens or, and how we're going to make sure the impacts are covered immediately and in the future.
Thank you Claire too for noting the value and the importance of the open space that we have now and I think in the general plan and then the more specifics, the zoning is important that and when we're looking at agriculture land, ag zone land, I think that's so much an imperative of our rural town and, and the annexation changing that, I think we should be really mindful when we're looking at zoning because it's worked till now.
Did anyone up here have anything else to say before I open it up to the public? Anyone in the public have a comment on this joint session and then we've got a couple more agenda items coming up? Right, that's nobody. So let's go ahead and take a 10 minute recess.
Absolutely.
I'll step outside and see if he's there.
We got a long night ahead of us. If everybody can sit back down, we'll go back into session. Julia, that means you. Do you need to start the recording?
Okay, that brings us to 9B on the administrative agenda, the progress report for housing elements.
Yes, thank you. So every year, cities are required to submit an annual progress report, the APR, to both the Office of Planning and Research and the Housing and Community Development Department. It's due April 1st of each year. The report provides information to the state and the public on the implementation of the housing element and our progress towards the RENA numbers, which we were talking about at the previous discussion. So over the last year in 2024, we made some progress towards our RENA. We approved and or permitted and finalized one ADU. So the 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 report asks for a few things. One is projects that have been entitled. So that's where we have had Dan Co on the list before because it has been entitled, so it's ready to be permitted. And then projects that have been denied, building permits that have been issued and building permits that have been final. So in 2024, we had one building permit issued for an ADU and it was also final. We also reviewed an entitlement for 10 lots, Broad Meadows, which was denied. One other thing I wanted to touch on with the the RENA numbers is so the state is most interested in the lower income units. They are not really interested if we are building above moderate housing units. And their their biggest concern and where they can come after the cities is if we are, if we have constraints in place that limit or prohibit people from building these types of units. So what you'll see is many of the programs in our housing element are changes we need, or there are some, I'm sorry, it's not many, changes to zoning code or procedures that help to remove any constraints for developers who are building low-income units. So with our RENA numbers, like I said, we we're at one. But we have made some progress on some of our housing element programs. And since 2024, actually, our housing element now is officially certified by the state, which is a big hurdle. But a program that we have been working on for the past year is our countywide housing working group. So the group of all the planners in the county get together every three months to talk about issues in the housing element, figure out ways we can collaborate and work together and make any processes smoother throughout the jurisdictions where we can share resources, things like that. So we've talked about ADUs, water efficiency landscaping ordinance, and some growth projections for all the cities in the county. Next week, we have a meeting scheduled where we will be have someone from environmental health coming to talk to us about smoke-free multi-house, multi-unit housing, which is a program in our housing element. So we are slowly checking off some of those programs, which looks good. I mean, that's, that is what is in in our control as a city is our our implementation of these programs. I think that pretty much sums up the the APR for 2024. I can answer any questions we have about it, but I'm just looking for direction to go ahead and and submit this to the state.
I had a thought, you know, obviously, a lot of these, I ran out of space, but a lot of these are not yet implemented, right? And so it's, and I think I understand why. However, some of them, you indicate that they're not yet implemented, but they're going to be soon or something like that. Is it possible within this, you know, progress report to indicate when and what is going to happen? What is it that you know that caused you to make those kind of comments here and there? And why not include it in the progress report? The specificity I'm talking about. And I'm not sure if that's overly burdensome or helpful or whatever, but it occurred to me, so I wanted to share it.
I think with some of them, it all depends on budget and staff availability. So, you know, I'm a contract employee. Some of my time is cost recovery from applicants. And then the other part is the city is paying, paying out of their budget to for for planning staff time. So if there is something that's going to take a large amount of time, that has to be something that's in the budget.
I guess, for instance, in number 22, it's about application and processing procedures. And it was my understanding that we are actively working on that with the new TAC and that kind of thing. So why not report that? Or did I misunderstand that one?
Let's see.
But I mean, that's a level of specificity that might be helpful and show them, you know, more than just we're working on it.
I had the same same kind of comment, and I'm just going to jump in because I think we're working towards the same answer. Some of these seem like they can be implemented by the city or the staff. And some of them seem like they're going to be done by the working group. And some of them are far off down the to-do list with staff time and availability. But I agree with Dan, some of these things, we can affect ourselves with policy, you know?
So for example, 22, program 22, review application processing procedures in 2025 and in 2028. So this was about what we did in 2024, so.
Right, but didn't we get started on the visioning that TAC and all that stuff? Or am I mistaken?
No, we did. So I guess we could add that.
I mean, it's, it's not a huge deal, but it's something, it's something concrete. I'm, that's all I'm suggesting.
I see what you're saying there. And I can make some of those changes where even though it doesn't have to be done until 2025, we can show how hard we've been working here.
Show, hey, we're on our way, we're doing something. We're not just waiting until the date and then going to report.
And then on the same lines, not in the report that you submit to the state, but, you know, something from you, back to our conversation we had with planning commission previously. If you can indicate, you know, which of these things can be homegrown, either done by the staff or the council or a community group, you know, or working with a community group, let us know. And, you know, those could be objectives of the planning commission, maybe, or the council. And then, since I'm talking, I'm going to go ahead and go back to what Julia was talking about in the last agenda item that I think relates to this one. When you're talking about what teeth the state might be putting into some of this, my head always jumps towards funding because we are and will continue to be asking the state for money, probably forever. And, you know, do they base any of their funding off of, you know, your performance in these areas?
The last two grants that I've worked on here, well, I started them when I was in Plymouth, but have helped move them forward here to the lead funding and, oh, I can't remember the other one. But their only requirement was that you do your APR. So.
I meant bigger funding, like when we're asking for money for the, whatever we do with the sewer or, you know, Saferoots to school, you know, other kinds of large projects, you know, does that, is this part of our report card?
So they, again, they're going to want to see that we are removing constraints from development. So they they do understand, we, you know, since we are not the developers, we are not building the housing, but we're making it as easy as we can for these developers to come in and produce this housing.
It seems like a lot of this goes above and beyond just how many houses you're in your inventory and how many you need to have in those different categories. What is a reasonable accommodation mean?
So, so to like allow, let's see.
I'm on page 54 of our packet. It's program 15, adopt a reasonable accommodation procedure for housing. I struggle to understand what that means.
So it's to accommodate people with disabilities. So, for example, if we had a requirement, let me think of something, an example here. Let's just say it was like the setback, they couldn't meet the setbacks because they need to have an accommodation at their house so that we would consider something like that and we would allow them that accommodation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's a really case-by-case
Yes.
basis? And as Dan mentioned, there's, I counted 13 of the 25 programs that are not yet implemented. And we talked, and we also, you mentioned budget. What would be your best guess of the cost to implement all those? And you don't have to be specific. Is it a big number?
Well, our goal with the housing working group is that we will work together and kind of share that cost through the cities because they're, we all have the same programs because it's a joint housing element. So it's probably not a huge number, but it's finding, yeah, ways to work with other groups. Like, for example, the the county health guy, had he reached out to me and he has a grant, I think, for this. And I said, perfect, we have a program for you and you can help us implement it. And there we go, a free way to get this implemented through the through the county. And so I think that's, I've done a lot of the legwork with the county working group and so making sure that we can get other cities. I, you know, I've had other planners in the county helping also have done a lot of legwork, but spreading that out over all of the cities. So the city of Sutter Creek is not the only one fitting, like paying the bill for working on these programs or. Yeah.
Okay.
Does the county appear to be stepping up to their part?
Yeah. So like I said, we've only had three, three meetings, four meetings, and we've kind of rotated who was in charge. And it's rotated mostly just between two cities. And so one of the agenda items coming up will be, how are we going to divide these programs up? And we can work, you know, either you take one through five and come back with your ideas and the next city, this one and those, yeah.
I had question here on program 16, the federal voucher program, page 57. Can you explain, so we're all more clearly aware of how the voucher program works? And from what I read, it sounds like there needs to be someone from the state that probably could come to the county and see eligibility.
So I am not very familiar with this and we have not reached out to the Santa Claus County Regional Housing Authority to start working with us on this.
Okay. Can you give a brief definition or explanation of of the voucher program? Or what the voucher program should be addressing? And who could benefit from it?
So I haven't read this. Is it section eight housing? Is that what it looks like?
I believe that is what it is.
So, yeah, again, it's not something we do on our own.
Yeah, I believe the vouchers are for section eight housing.
Which is?
It's just subs, you know, they, the part of the rent is paid by.
So it's partly subsidized?
Yes.
Anybody else up here before I open it to the public? The public have any comments on the housing element? The housing element annual report, the housing element's already been submitted and approved. Nope. Okay, then we need a motion to approve the progress report. Is that right, Tom?
And would you like me to add additional comments on a few of them?
I would feel better if you could do that. And with those additions, I would move to approve the 2024 APR.
I second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now that's over, everyone can go home. Nothing left to see here. That takes us to 9C, a pre-screening of 150 home project proposed in Gold Rush. Tom, do you want to start?
Yeah, so again, I just want to kind of highlight what we're doing tonight, right? So.
How about what we're doing and not doing?
What we're not doing, yes, including that. So what we're doing is a pre-screening. This is a large project for the city. You know, a pre-screening is a chance for the council, for the public to hear about a project. This is not even a complete application at this point. So the council's not making a decision. It's really a chance for you to hear about it, get some background, ask questions. Actually, the first half of what we were doing tonight is really talking about kind of the the structure, what a specific plan is and a lot of definitions. It's been quite a few years since this was an active project. The developer, the original developer is gone, the development agreement with that developer has expired. And so we have a new developer that wants to propose a project under the current, the city's current specific plan. The city council has adopted the specific plan, so that is the zoning for that part of town. And and so again, tonight, council should listen, should ask questions. You should reserve making any decisions or comments so you don't have to recuse yourself. So once the project is complete, it will go through our normal process. It'll go to the planning commission and it will come back, if appealed, it will come back to you guys, I think, on the tentative note.
I just want to say how I understand that and maybe just take a quick pause to make sure that we're all on the same page on what we're doing here tonight. So to me, what that means is because, you know, this is old and new, it's an old specific plan, there's no development agreement, there is an EIR, it's new people. I, my idea of being here tonight is just to see where the start line is. And, you know, then it'll follow the process from there.
I appreciate that, Claire. And I appreciate that at least the first half of this is really education on process, so to speak. And that's essential in this thing. We need to know where are we, what is the process, what are the steps?
So why don't we go through it and then we'll, you guys can decide when you want to take public comment?
No.
It's a public meeting, you can attend as a resident. Again, we're not making any decisions tonight. I'm not sure what he's looking at.
Cover.
Uh, just because I think you guys were here for the previous session, that's all.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm just going to go briefly over a specific plan. Like I said, the, or Tom said, the, the first part of this presentation will be kind of educational, but we will be referring at points, at times, to the Gold Rush project. So a specific plan is a planning document that implements the goals and policies of the general plan. It is detailed, it has its own zoning, it's like, it's an, it's own little general plan and own little zoning ordinance for a specific area of, of the town. They are typically developed when it's, it's a large undeveloped area or an area that you want to direct the, the growth and development in a certain way. So. Let's see, I already did that one. The next part of, um, I wanted to go over is the SEQA and the EIR. So part of the entitlement, during part, during the entitlement process, there is an environmental review. And one of the documents that can sometimes come out of an environmental review is an environmental impact rep, is report. So this specific plan, project area, also has a certified EIR that was, um, reviewed and adopted by the city council when the project was originally brought forward. Things like population and housing, public service and utilities, transportation circulation, air quality, noise, soils, hydrology and water quality, public safety and hazards, bioresources, cultural resources, visual resources, and land use was all studied in the EIR that accompanies the specific plan. So like I said, the EIR has been certified and the specific plan was adopted for this area. And if the development is consistent with what was set up, cert, studied in the EIR, no additional environmental review is necessary. Additional studies may be necessary, especially because the studies that went into this EIR are, in some cases, you know, twenty, twenty years old, so.
Can I jump in there?
Yeah.
So in terms of the SEQA part of this, um, because the, or correct me if I'm wrong, but the EIR that was done encompasses the entirety of the project.
Yep.
So, um, our concerns about piecemealing would be kind of the opposite of this. Piecemealing is if you're just going to review one part at a time and not see the whole. So that would not be a concern in this case?
It's not, so the, the impacts of the entire project, the entire specific plan area were studied in the original EIR. So as long as any future development is consistent with what was studied and not creating additional impacts, the EIR stands and is the document that the planning commission and the city council would use to make future decisions or entitlements on this property or in the specific plan area.
Is one of the studies that would have to be done, a traffic impact study?
Yeah, so that was done and there is mitigation measures for the traffic that would be, um, created by a project in that area. We are asking for additional traffic studies, um, for this new phase of the project. And there have been some changes in state law on how traffic impacts are measured in, since this was done too, so to look at that.
Right, the, the most significant being. Vehicle miles traveled versus level of service.
Yes.
Which are very different things. So as we go through this, when we require an additional traffic study at this point, is it based on LOS or VMT?
VMT.
It's based on VMT. And everything else sits there already based on LOS, the rest of the, you're calling the project.
Yeah.
But this one fifty, we'll be looking using vehicle miles traveled.
Yeah, because that's how we have to study impacts that way.
So again, we're, we're requiring updated studies to see if there were changed conditions in the period of time.
Right.
If the study indicates no change, then we'd stick with the existing specific plan.
Yeah.
Or the existing mitigations.
Um, the part of the study that addresses public services and utilities, thinking of water and wastewater mainly. Obviously, that scene has changed many times since then. How, how can you even do a SEQA study on those, those moving parts? I mean, I would assume that would be something that would also have to be readdressed. Or would it, am I making the wrong assumption?
So infrastructure improvements are still one of kind of our outstanding topics on this project that we are working at the city and.
I understand that, but in terms of the SEQA document, the EIR, so the utility situation in twenty-ten, mostly with water, not wastewater, pretty different than the forecast or the outlook or the status right now. So certainly, who, you know, this project would have to work with AWA, but in terms of the SEQA document, would that be redone?
Well, we, we will review it and see how it, what needs to change in it, so. But the other example of something that we most likely will ask for revises the biological assessment. So in twenty years, biology out there could have and has probably changed.
Right.
Including trees, that's a big, that was a big thing, um, when the EIR was originally done and trees change in twenty years, so we want to know what kind of changes have happened out there and how that will impact any potential development.
So just to follow up on Claire's.
Why don't we get through the definitional stuff, I think we're like diving into the project, but, did you have a quick one?
Well, just a quick follow-up on, on Claire's. Erin, you, you said that we'll look at that, um, water situation and if it's determined that something has significantly changed, then we'll study it more in-depth.
Yeah.
Can you briefly explain, well, what would have had to have changed? What's the threshold to determine whether or not it's going to require a restudy or not? Are, is that documented?
It's, it's within the specific plan, so they already studied that number of homes. So from that perspective, the infrastructure has already been studied for this level of development.
Right, but to Claire's point, the overall water situation perhaps has changed.
So if the SEQA, the EIR said what the water needs, usage impact will be on this whole project, in twenty-ten, we weren't in a situation where the water agency had little to no hookups to give. You know, how do those two things meet, current day, you know, needs and our.
Ability to provide.
Status.
So they'll still have to go through the same process with AWA and submit their application and get conditional will serves and will serve letters. Whether AWA is going to be able to give those, that.
But that has nothing to do with SEQUAs, my question.
Yeah, so what, you know, what you would see then is a condition of approval that says get your will served from AWA. And how like, yeah, so next we're going to move on to development agreements. So a development agreement is a contract, um, between a developer or an applicant in the city that locks in regulations, policies, um, and compensations for a project. So it, it has both developers' responsibilities and the city's responsibilities. And it, it provides some certainty for developers on projects and it also lays out a schedule of dates and obligations. So a DA is not required for development projects. And developers sometimes ask for them or sometimes they do, they do not, so.
Does the city ever ask for it?
I would assume yes, that a, a city would require, would ask a developer to enter into a development agreement on certain projects.
They're agreements, they're not required, you know, so that's usually a negotiation between the parties. Um, often in my experience with my other cities, the development agreement is something that allows for sort of long-term, very long-term preservation of rights. So you have, you know, sometimes twenty and twenty-five year development agreements where you have large master plan communities. That's not what these proponents are at this time proposing, they're scaling back. So in my experience, a hundred and fifty units is a lot for us, but it's not, you know, in, in general California development, it's not a lot. So to me, seeing a development agreement for a hundred and fifty units wouldn't be normal. I mean, I, I'm not saying you, you can't find it, but in my opinion, I understand why they're not asking for that here.
Okay, and we don't have to do this now, but I'd like to hear more about the pros and cons of that kind of development agreement, if we can, you know, table that and, because it says right here that it often lays out schedules and dates and obligations. Those seem like important things, even for a hundred and fifty homes in Sutter Creek. So.
If all you're going to do is just do what your map says and you're going to do it in a couple of years, ordinarily, you wouldn't ask for development agreement.
Okay, all right, well, this is education, so I appreciate it.
I guess the other thing is, um, you know, a specific plan is for a part of town.
Right.
Could be multiple property owners. Specifically, a development agreement is for when one property owner owns, owns a large piece. And like Derek said, it may go on for a number of years with a number of benefits and things happening at different points in time. So again, I think, I think as we get into the specifics, you know, a lot of those are captured in the specific plan.
Stay tuned.
So next, the, the planning commission and the council's role in reviewing a specific plan. Again, the, the specific plan is the document that has all your programs, your policies, your goals and your zoning ordinance information in it. So when reviewing it, you're reviewing it against the specific plan, not the general plan or the rest of the city's zoning ordinance because it has its own unique requirements to that. And that any changes of the zoning or what is, if, if they are asking for a variance from the specific plan or they, if they want to change from that, they would need to amend the specific plan, so. Okay, any questions on kind of the background portion of this presentation? Because next we'll move into the.
What's the procedure for amending the specific plan?
It'd be, it's the same as amending the general plan. So it would be planning commission at the city, and then the city council is the approval authority of the amendment. Okay, are we ready to move into the?
Did the public have any questions on the background education side of this? Council? Go ahead, Erin.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to be talking about the Gold Rush Ranch specific plan, which was originally approved by the city in two thousand and ten. The EIR was completed in two thousand and nine. The developers and the city entered into a development agreement which has since expired in two thousand and nineteen. Like Tom mentioned, the ownership of the property has changed. In, in about two thousand and twenty-two, the applicant began discussing options to develop the housing and the golf course. And then, um, really in, in two thousand and twenty-four, the applicant submitted the application that we're kind of going to look at tonight, which is Phase One A, which is a hundred and fifty homes, some of the, the infrastructure, a neighborhood park and a community park. So Phase One A, which is a portion of Village B.
I'm sorry, I got to stop here because I had a question on the second to the last bullet on the previous slide, it says that in two thousand twenty-three, the applicant initially submitted an application for a new specific plan, then withdrew it.
Yes.
What was changed in the specific plan, why was it withdrawn?
So I think what the applicant and the city had been going back and forth for a few years regarding what they, how they wanted to move forward and how they did not know that, didn't think that they could move forward with what the existing specific plan said. So they wanted to change the phasing around, so it was, so they brought a new spec, they thought they would do a new specific plan instead of amending the old one. I think that is what the city previously had wanted them to do, was amend the old specific plan. So they brought this new specific plan and at the same time, we're talking to us about this Phase One A option also. So the, the new specific plan really was not, is not too different than the old specific plan. It was still kind of staff's opinion that they should really spend the time to amend the old specific plan instead of doing a new one because that would remove it, it, it's amendment to the general plan, it takes that specific plan away, it also gets rid of that EIR that we have and it starts the process over again. So, um, that's why I think this, moving forward with this Phase One A or the existing specific plan is.
Erin, but, but, and excuse me, specifically, what was it?
There wasn't really much difference.
Well, there had to be something different.
So they were asking for less hous, less housing units.
Okay, fewer than the one fifty?
Yes, and the golf course was, um, not in the exact same layout. And I, that, I, and the, the developer team is here and I don't.
I don't think there's a golf course included in this.
No, so again.
But mostly the phasing, less housing units and a, a slight reconfiguration of the golf course.
Right, so we're talking about the entire specific plan, nothing to do with this.
Not the, not the one fifty.
Yes.
Thank you, I was confused.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, but just to, to go back there and to, to clarify, so the discussion with the city and the developers from two thousand onwards was with the city staff and the developers. None of this has come to Planning Commission, none of this is coming to City Council, none of this has been a complete application, right? So we've been down this road before and somewhat recently where the city had suggested a developer either start from scratch or not or add on or go back to the beginning and, um, you know, I, I guess I'd hope at some point for some more explanation on why this is the best way to go for the city right now.
Well, it's also, it's the application we have in front of us.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, that's.
But we've been giving feedback all along on what we, we thought they should do, which, you know, was this and then we suggested something else and then now we're back to this, so.
I guess, again, we're giving them options, you know, and they would go think about it and then they decided to submit this project.
So overview of Phase One A, it's a tentative subdivision map. They're asking for a hundred and fifty residential lots varying in size from five thousand to seventeen thousand square feet with the average lot size of sixty-nine hundred square feet. They have a neighborhood park, which is a little over an acre, which meets what the specific plan requires. The dedication of a community park.
It says a little over nine acres.
I'm sorry, a little over an acre, or a little under, I'm sorry, a little over a half acre.
Half an acre, okay.
Sorry, um, I was looking at seventeen acres below. And so the dedication of the community park, which is seventeen acres, extension of valley view to Highway one oh four, water, wastewater and sewer improvements. They're proposing to remove thirteen point three acres of tree canopy, but they will be doing, there's a street tree program in the specific plan and tree replacement on, um, for single-family lots, each one is required to have a tree. And then there is a retention plan in the specific plan regarding what must be saved and mitigated, um, regard, for the tree removals.
What does a seventeen acre community park dedication mean? Just that somewhere seventeen acres one day will be a park or?
That's what they're showing right there of where the seventeen acre community park will be. So they are not at this, the.
The bottom.
The green blob.
So does dedication mean there will be public access?
There will not be public improvements at this time.
Given to the city.
Yeah.
But there will be, okay.
Yeah, but not.
There won't be, it won't be built.
Won't be built.
And then it would be on the city to build it out? It's just given the property to the city for a park?
Again, I think as part of our conditions of approvals, we'd probably talk about some improvements. But this is mainly a, a open space kind of part. So again, just to be clear, this is essentially half of what was called Village B in the specific plan. So if you're looking at the specific plan, look for Village B. And it's, it's limited to one fifty because that's the capacity we have in the wastewater plant.
I have a question with regard to the original specific plan, were there walking trails in it?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Eight miles or so.
And then, so.
And then, so when we, with this amendment, those are no longer included?
They are. No, no, I mean, the, the majority of them, I think, were through the golf course. They're not, in phase one A, they're no, they're sidewalks.
Just to be clear, is there an amendment to this specific plan?
No.
No, cause you just, there's no.
They are in the specific plan. They are around the golf course area, which is not being developed yet.
Okay, so then I'm confused. So there was an approved specific plan?
Yes, in two thousand and ten, the, this Gold Rush Ranch specific plan was approved.
Okay, got that. And then, so what's being filed? I thought.
So they are filing an app, they have filed an application that they are saying is consistent with this Gold Rush Ranch specific plan. The two thousand and ten plan. One of the things that we had talked, the city had gone back and forth with them about is phasing. In the orig, in the specific plan, it's not the original specific plan, it is the specific plan and I'll get to that in two slides. Phase one had a lot. It had this whole village B, which I think was three hundred houses. Um, and the golf course and parks and things like that. So let me cover this side and then we'll get to that. So this is, you can see in that, um, the gray part and the, up there is shows where. Phase one A is in respect to the whole plan, so.
Sorry, one more question. So the old specific plan, was it in phases or was it all in one?
It was in phases. I believe there was four phases. So let's go to the next slide and that's gonna show what the original phase one. Was, which is the parkways, the, the roads, the golf and clubhouse, the eight point four miles of trails, commercial uses. So community park, which they're doing in phase one A are dedicating vacation homes and hotels, C F D. And then the water treatment plant. So you, wastewater, sorry, thanks Matt. Um, so you can see what they're keeping in phase one, what they're proposing in phase one and what they are saying they will do in phase one B.
So the community park is phase one A?
The dedication of it, yes.
And that's what we just referred to that was gonna be given, just committed back to the city?
Yes.
So the eight point four mile of trails, phase one B.
Yes.
So phase one B will take those eight point four miles of trails and now they would be potentially developed.
Yes, so because a lot of the trails are around the golf course, that's why they are asking to move that to this phase one B. Because that is when the golf course will be developed. And then.
Though those are two.
So this is the area of what used to be phase B, of phase one, it's much, much larger area.
The green, the bright green on the map. Used to be, is in the specific plan listed out as phase one.
But even though this is very different than that, it still falls under the same specific plan.
So it's different as in they've broken it into a phase one A and a phase one B.
Okay, so it's the timing.
Good touch on phasing maybe.
Sorry, you want me to touch on?
Phasing and how it is consistent with the specific plan of phase one A and a phase one B.
Correct, the idea here is that. They don't have the resources or the, at this stage, it's many years on to do. The full phased plan that was originally called for. So they've scaled it back substantially. And what they're doing is just a, a small part. They're just doing a phase. So it's really like taking, and I'm just using a number, ten percent of the project. That they got entitled back in twenty-ten and they're just gonna do ten percent of the project. And it's, and it's just the project that's literally closest to city limits. So I, I mean, so the question really is, you know, is this consistent with the specific plan? Because it's not a hundred percent of what is being done. But they still have to demonstrate compliance with the standards in the specific plan. So what we have to do is make a determination, is this ten percent, that's, that's my number, please don't, you know, hold me. I'm just using that for sake of explanation. Is this ten percent that they're doing consistent with the specific plan? Staff is working with the applicant, the developer now, to bring something forward and. We're trying, we, obviously they want to bring something forward, they, they want to develop something. We want to, um, work with them to present something to you for you to decide in your discretion. And so we, as we all, the three of us sit here, we're working through these issues ourselves. So I just want to emphasize tonight, we don't have the full answers to all your questions. The purpose of tonight really was to, to give you an opportunity. We've been working on this for a couple of years. And Erin and Tom in particular have been working on it pretty non-stop for the past several months. So the idea here is we wanted to daylight this, but please understand that we don't, at this stage, we're still working through to get this complete. And, and, and to work with the developer and actually get it in a place where we can bring it to hearing bodies.
So like, I, like I explained, um, about what kind of the planning commission will do is they will have to review this project. And determine if it's consistent with the specific plan. And there is a phasing plan in the specific plan and there's a grading plan and there's a tree retention plan and there is a circulation plan and all those things. So they will have to look at all of that and say, yes, it is or no, it is not consistent with the specific plan.
And one thing I'll add, I'll add the legal weeds, get in the weeds legally. There's a, a body of court cases that talk about when there is a determination or an interpretation of the specific plan. The body that ultimately approved that plan is given deference. So what that means is that you are the city council. Your previous city council adopted a specific plan. So you will be given some deference in how you interpret that. Now deference doesn't mean you can, you know, say night is day and day is night. You know, it doesn't mean that you can reach unreasonable interpretations. But you do have some discretion and as long as you make a reasonable interpretation. Um, as you apply the current situation years later to a scaled back development than what was previously approved. But again, the, we're, we're talking at generalities here, so we don't have anything specific to present to you. But I do want to share the legal doctrine that you have, you will have some discretion and some deference to any determination you make.
Well, and I, I think the way I understand it, that there is no old specific plan, there's no new specific plan, there's a specific plan. But there is, this application is just for this one thing. So yes, the planning commission and then our job. Is to determine whether or not it fits within the specific plan. But when the specific plan and the original project looked at all of it together. We have to consider whether if this project truncated still satisfies the obligations in the specific plan. So assuming, or not assuming, that's the wrong word, but let's just say this is all we ever get. You know, we have to make sure that what is built into this part satisfies the obligations that were. You know, understood in the whole plan. So, you know, that, I, I think that that's where it goes beyond. Just seeing if the, the grading and the traffic and the, you know, whatever satisfies the original. We have to, okay.
Yeah, and then who is obligated to carry this through? Cause it's my understanding that the developer will divide the lots. And then sell it to a home builder. So then who's responsible for the second phase funding?
I mean, the, the developer. So if the developer gets approval of their tentative map, so a hundred and fifty homes. And then they sell that to a home builder and they would build those homes, but the developer would still own the rest of this property. And then, you know, the goal would be that they start working on phase one B, which would provide the golf course and the trails and the commercial uses. Things like that.
Maybe talk through the tentative to final to building. So like in the specific plan, there, each phase has requirements.
Yes, so let's say they have a ten, they get their tentative subdivision map approved and that is approved by the planning commission.
Of the hundred.
Hundred and fifty homes. With that comes a whole list of conditions of approval. Uh, and this, this is the same with the, the like, one lot subdivisions we've been seeing where people have divided their lots. From one lot to two lot, they have conditions of approval. They have to meet these conditions of approval before we can sign off on the final map. And those become actual legal lots. So a condition of approval would be get A W A will serve letters. Um, provide, you know, do your tree mitigation, put in your infrastructure improvements, things like that. And so once that whole checklist of conditions of approval has been completed. We'd bring the map back to the city council and they are the ones who approve the final map. Engineer signs off on it, the city clerk signs off on it, when it's submitted to the county and these become legal lots. And at that point, then they can, you know, sell, sell off individual lots or the home builders start, starts building them and selling them off that way. Yes.
So just to ta, touch on that, what Erin said, so they could also bond for the improvements. So those conditions that they have to put in roads and pipelines, they can bond, put up a bond for that, um, to pay for that. Um, to kind of defer the time period. And if they default, then the bond would go back to the city. City would pull the bond and take the money to, to go finish the project if they wish. We would likely have what we call a subdivision improvement agreement. So they would enter into an agreement with us. That would outline all of the things they have to do and that would require, as Matt says, bonding. Right. And that we would have the ability to keep those bonds in place and to pull them if, you know, and obviously we'd have to do a full review and make sure the bonding is accurate.
So that's different than the developer agreement that we talked about earlier.
Development, yeah, a subdivision improvement agreement is, once you've entitled and approved the map. That is a way to final the map without all of the, everything being done because, you know. They're, they, they have to bond, they have to do all kinds of infrastructure. So that's a different thing than a development agreement. That's correct.
So we wouldn't bond them with this application to, um, do all of the infrastructure, the requirements for. I, I don't even know what the total number is, nine hundred homes, but you know, say it were to be built, be built all the way out. We would just bond for this piece and for the benefit of the city to not force. Something that, you know, the, the market and the conditions and the economy can handle right now. So if we approve a hundred and fifty homes and it becomes built and we need to hang loose. Or they need to hang loose for a little bit before it makes sense to go any further, they're. Yeah, they're, they're fine to do that.
Yeah, I think, again, maybe another helpful way to think about this is what if it was owned by multiple property owners? A lot of the, if you look at the specific plan, you know, each area has a name and each of those areas have requirements. And so if somebody owned that area, they would have to do those, those improvements. So, you know, a lot of them are tied to the geography, if you will. And so like, when the golf course is built or when the commercial district is built, there are certain standards that apply to those areas. It don't really apply to this phase, this phase is village B, which has some specific requirements. The other thing I was gonna say, well, go ahead.
Will we, while we're only considering really right now phase one A and one B.
Just one A.
One A, so.
And you're not considering anything?
Yeah, exactly. We're not considering it, we're just kind of giving a preview of it. It's also, so, cause there are still. We'll get into them, some of the kind of question marks still, and this is an opportunity to, to talk about them. And this, the developer can hear, cause you know, if we, if we continue to move forward, ask for these studies to more time, more money. And then we get to the planning commission and the planning commission says, no, we're not really, we're not willing to consider that. Then we've kind of wasted time and money. Um, so to, to kind of get some of these issues aired out. So we can gauge maybe direction on things too.
So just Jim, to your point, um, I think that's, it's a good differentiation between the developer agreement and the, um. Subdivision agreement, you know, in, improvement agreement, because the comment I made before, wanting to know more about that other. It sounds like the subdivision agreement will have every, you know, all that level of detail included there and. How and bonds and all that stuff.
And the, the thing I was gonna say, maybe you guys already understood this, is once we get to that final map, that's not the end of it either. The specific plan has, um, design criteria and building criteria for actual construction of the houses. Things like planting the trees and so whoever's building will also have to comply with the specific plan.
So I'm gonna go over some key, um, considerations in the, start with the benefits. So this is a hundred and fifty new homes to the community and it's a housing type that we don't really have a lot of. They're smaller lots, which could potentially be more affordable, that would help towards our arena. Now, these, these units are not gonna be deed restricted as affordable units, but based on the lot size and the size of house. You could put on a five thousand square foot lot, it's obviously gonna be more affordable than a half acre lot with a bigger house. Um, the open space in parks, the point five nine acre neighborhood park. And then the, the area for the community park and then more funds to, to fund the improvements of those parks. I'm gonna let Tom talk about the infrastructure improvements.
Yeah, so, you know, we're, we're still discussing this, but, um. The idea and the, and the interest on the part of the developer would be to help pay for some infrastructure that would take recycled water from the treatment plant. Up to the property. So again, planning for a future golf course would provide, uh, basically disposal for the city. And again, that's, that's just the discussion around the hundred and fifty homes. And, you know, from my perspective, I've, I've looked at it as, well, if the project continues, now we have a recycled water customer. Um, as, as more homes are developed, if we only ended up with a hundred and fifty homes. We would also end up with, um, some disposal area, which we need for our wastewater in any case. So it'd help us improve our capacity. And then again, we've talked a lot about C F Ds tonight, that's part of the specific plan. Um, so that's.
That was a question I had. So we've all been talking a lot about C F Ds and I see that it's in their application, right? To include that in one A of village B. Um, but is that part of the specific plan? Is C F Ds required in our, in the?
So it is required in this specific plan. That's one of their conditions of approval is that they create a C F D.
Does this, i, the breadth of the C F D, i, is that already negotiated? I, I, I'm not an expert in C F D, but I understand they could cover this much or this much or this much.
So we're still go, determining what would be included in the C F D, you know, roadways, park maintenance, um. Like median landscaping, things like that. Yeah, yeah, lights. Okay, so key considerations, the drawbacks. So the specific plan says that phase one must have a minimum lot size, an average minimum lot size of the seven thousand square feet. So they are proposing a minimum lot size on phase one A of sixty-nine, about sixty-nine hundred square feet. After the whole village B, so is built out, so phase one and phase, or phase one A and phase one B. The average would be over seven thousand. So this is, um, something that I think should be considered. Because in case phase one B does not happen, you have a phase one A that is inconsistent with your specific plan. Of minimum lot size.
It's not all, it's not really all of phase one B, it's, um, rest of village B.
But it's, yeah.
Another hundred and fifty.
Yeah, which is the homes in phase one B. I don't know.
So.
Be a total of three hundred.
Three hundred homes. Would, would average over seven thousand square feet, which is the requirement in the specific plan. But just the original, the starting one fifty is not at seven thousand square feet.
Is that then where we would amend the specific plan? Because we would need to not assume that the next homes would.
I don't think it requires a specific plan amendment. What it requires is an understanding that the phasing in the specific plan. Is being built out differently than what's actually happening.
That, that. The other half of village B would still be zoned for housing. And when it was developed, the average for village B would have to be seven thousand.
Okay, but in, back to the what if, you know, what if this is all we ever get? And it's just under seven thousand and I mean, that's not a huge concern of mine, honestly. But it would not fit within the specific plan. Would that be an issue? Would we not want to just amend it?
Right, so I don't think you understand what I'm saying. It, the specific does, plan does not say that half of village B has to be over seven thousand. It says all of village B does. So if the second half was developed a hundred years later.
Right.
It would have to average seven thousand at that point in time.
And I believe that it says if it's not over seven thousand, then we can, would require them to provide affordable housing. So that's something that the planning commission and the city council could think about to, okay, well, we're fine with it staying at sixty-nine. So that's something that the planning commission and the city council could think about to, okay, well, we're fine with it staying at sixty nine hundred if we only get the one fifty, but let's figure out a way to, you know, require them to do some affordable housing or something like that. That, that option is there in the specific plan. So another kind of challenge or drawback we're having right now is the grading. The specific plan identifies different grading areas, restricted, limited and general grading where there's not additional requirements. So part, part of this project is in the restricted grading area. And the restricted grading area, we believe, was mapped based on tree canopy and, and where the trees are on the lot and obviously the topography. So land within the restricted grading area can only be graded for, the lots can be graded, or the grading is restricted to the driveway and the individual home site. Tree removal is limited to the individual building footprint and, and it does not allow for excessive manufactured slopes. So for example, anywhere where there's more of a manufactured slope of over eight feet high and two hundred feet long, they, it, the, the, the grading would have to follow the topography of the land. So if we want to go to one of these sections, let's see, let's go to the next one. And Matt, our city engineer here, can help kind of describe these grading. Matt, I don't know if you wanna, we don't have.
Yeah, can you go back a slide, Aaron, please? So that, that vertical line, I guess it's black, it's kind of in the middle and it's pointing to the right. That's, that's the cross section A that's on the next page. So we're starting at the top of the hill, kind of working our way down from a side, side profile view. So the next slide, please. So you could see up at the top left, that was those upper lots, a flat pad and then you come down for the road. And then it, it kind of comes up and then you have another pad for a lot and then you cut, steep slope coming down. And you kind of just kind of terrace down the hillside. You guys can't really see, but the, the thicker line is the proposed grading. And the, the other line is, is the existing ground that's there now. It's dashed, but it's hard to see.
So where are the roads? Like, is this a road?
Yes.
And this is a road?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's a road?
Yep.
So are there homes on both sides of the road or just?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so go back a slide, please. So I have something to point, but the dark gray, those are the roads. So they're going kind of right to left. So you have lots, road, lots, slope coming down, steep slope in the backyard, lots, road, a pad, and so it's just kind of stair stepping down all the way down to that lower road. So you have one, two, three, four roads, left, right there, through that cross section we're looking at. So it's pretty steep backyards. And the, the lots are so small that the house is crammed in there, it's, it's tight.
So then over the long term, there's, if they're small and the house is taking up much of it, there's probably not much of a consideration that a homeowner is gonna come in after and do their own grading.
Well, they wouldn't be able to. Yeah, and so that's something Matt and I have been working with their project engineer to get the grading plan to be more consistent with the specific plan. We do still think there's some inconsistencies there. And we do think it's very important for both planning commission and the city council and the public to understand what this might, these final lots will, will look like, that there will be steep grades in the back, there will be terracing, there will be a lot here and a lot twenty, twenty feet below it and some, and some places on this proper, on this development.
Is this portion, is this property steeper than Chris, what Chrisview property is?
Hmm, close, but I don't think that's steep.
What about that development up behind Rayleigh's over there in Jackson? You know how it terraces down? Is it consistent with something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I imagine.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty drastic coming down.
Those are bigger lots though, too.
They're bigger lots, but yeah.
The slope, that kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah.
There's massive grading.
Yeah. So other open issues, Tom, this is your slide.
Yeah, so Councilmember Reardon's familiar with the first one, yeah, sorry.
Just a quick question, uh, and this, this specific plan talks about, let me see what it says, flat padding. Says all, in some instances, overall, flat padding of the land use area will be the preferred approach. All flat padded areas. Is that, is that an engineering term, padded?
What section of the specific plan are you looking at?
Page grading standards.
So flat padding is just creating a flat, huge pad, but the, the area that I was looking, or Aaron and I were kind of diving into for this area was the, what was it called? The?
The home site.
No, the restricted.
Restricted grading zone.
So the restricted grading zone talked about, you could only grade for the pad, or for the house pad and the driveway. And I think the way that was written is pretty open for interpretation. The way I kind of visualize it, but these lots are so small, is you have, you try to work around the existing ground and build a pad for, for the home and the driveway and keep the existing kind of, but these lots are so small, you can't really make that happen.
No, there's no, no distance between it really.
Yeah.
And another, you know, one of the, the items that we were requesting is updated tree studies out there since this isn't a restricted grading zone and only allows tree removal for the footprint of the house and the driveway. So even if the grading extends beyond that and there's trees there, those trees have to be maintained from our understanding of the specific plan. And how are you going to do grading of a large area and maintain these existing trees?
The, the other question I had regard to, to the grading in, in the process of the construction and, and, and all that, is how is, is there any plan for erosion control? I mean, given the steep.
Oh yeah, they definitely have to have all that, yeah, BMPs and everything during construction.
Yes, so there's that, there's also a schedule for tree removal. Like you can't just go in and remove all the trees you're gonna remove at once, if, if they have it kind of.
Bird survey.
Yeah, so.
This, I'm sorry.
It's okay. And the original specific plan was this area a part of, like, was this, these homes designated in that spot?
Yes, so that is what has been kind of a head scratcher for us is these, these, this lot layout was what was originally proposed there. Yet there's some big challenges with this restricted grading zone.
So it seemed a little inconsistent, like the restricted zone makes sense for like the much larger lots, one acre lots. Here, I think, you know, they are attempting to do it, you can see they're attempting to follow the contours, but like you said, the houses are so close together with, you know, smaller setbacks.
Does, does the specific plan have a requirement for the ratio of the building footprint to the lot size?
It does have, it, yes, it does have lot coverage and I don't know what that is off the top of my head, I'm trying to pull a specific.
Maximum lot coverage?
Yeah.
Okay. I can find it.
So I know this meeting is going on long, why, why don't we finish the last couple of slides? I think, you know, would really like your impressions, you know, kind of areas you want to, maybe have questions about. And then obviously want to hear from the public and from the developer. So a couple of open issues, we're still trying to track down some of these things. And I've, I've talked to several people around at that time, still haven't really gotten a full picture on this. Bowers Extension Improvement, RTMF funds were used, about one and a half million dollars. In the, in the original development agreement, it said that would be repaid by the developer. Again, that has expired, ACTC has kept it on their books as a fund that is owed and they actually have it listed as owed by the city of Sutter Creek. When we've asked about that, they said, oh, it's, it's a pass through to a developer. And so, you know, I think the feeling is there's no, at this point, we haven't been able to find any legal agreement that says it's, it's like legally binding. But the developer has proposed, you know, some payments over time to help, I think, smooth the process. But that, that's still an open item that has to go to the ACTC board. The other open item is kind of the wastewater improvements and I kind of talked about that a little bit already. We're just talking about a pressurized pipeline at a pump station that would go from a wastewater plant that would take treated water up to the property. And again, you know, as a.
Secondarily treated water?
Uh, whatever level our plan is at, at the time. So yeah, I would start off the secondary. The idea was if we do move to a tertiary plant, it would then already be a pipeline in place for a golf course. And so again, like I kind of explained before, kind of thinking about it and what if the development continues and a golf course exists? And what if it doesn't? Either way, trying to have something that will be useful for the city and help further our, our wastewater goals.
And is the developer aware of the disposal easement that the city and, or that RSA has on that property?
So again, it hasn't been documented anywhere in any deed, but they're basically willing to give a new easement as part of the approval of this project. Yeah.
So next steps, the city and the applicant will consider any comments that we hear tonight. And we're, we're working towards a complete application. That includes having other outside agencies review this doc, the application and figuring out where we need additional information and additional studies. Once we have a complete application, the pro, the, the tentative subdivision map will go to the planning commission for review at a public hearing. So notices will be sent out to neighbors within three hundred feet and, and including, you know, posting on our website and the agendas and things like that and in the newspaper. And then the planning commission will review the subdivision map in, with its consistency to the specific plan. Because the planning commission has the authority to approve tentative subdivision maps. And then once the conditions of the maps have been met, and we talked about how those conditions can be met, either they are done or bonds are in place, the final map would come to the city council for approval and which would create the lots. That's the end of our presentation, staff's presentation. Obviously, we can answer any questions, the developer and his team are here, so they are, they're here.
I think the council's kind of been asking them as we go, did, do you all have anything to say before we open it up to the public?
I have one, I have one question and it has to do with the state's kind of recent, you know, talking about R1 zoning and with the, you know, the, the idea of creating more housing. How does that law impact this, you know, specific plan of R1 housing? Vis a vis, can they build duplexes there and, and can they do an ADR and?
So.
That kind of stuff.
Yes, they can build ADUs. We were talking about this earlier, staff, and the lot is going to constrain a lot of that. Some of these lots that the house will just back right up to a steep slope. So that would be an issue. And then like SB nine, which allows the splitting of lots. I would have to see if this is in the high fire area because that is, you're not allowed to do SB nine if you have a house, a lot in a, in a fire zone.
I see.
Yeah.
Because of density?
I think, yeah, safety, historic, like his thing, historic designated areas or zones. So, because SB nine has come up a few times in planning commission and that there's not much area of the city that SB nine would apply to because of our fire risk and historic designation.
How does that work when the specific plan was approved so long ago and there's new state codes? So SB nine didn't exist when the specific plan was approved, so what, what wins?
The legislature wins. Yeah, so we are, we are a general, even, even, well, there's actually a court case pending as to whether SB nine applies to charter cities. We are a general law city. The legislature has engrafted SB nine and other legislation like SB three thirty into the planning and zoning law, so the planning and zoning law will always apply.
So I don't remotely want to go there tonight, but as this evolves, the application and everything else, then some of the drawbacks, we're calling them, like the slope and like the inability to comply with ADUs and SB nine and things like that could be reason enough for the developer who owns the whole property to, you know, modify this, this map, this part. And so long as it, yeah, like I said, I don't want to, I, I don't want to go there yet, but you know, at, at what, can that sort of thing happen? We can still expect that that may happen before it, it comes to us. Am I correct in that? Cause we're all talking about streamlining things and not wasting everybody's time and money, yours and theirs and.
So we're on that body, what is it you want to happen before it comes to you?
I don't know what I want to happen, but I'm saying it, with these setbacks that you're, drawbacks that you're discussing and that, that the grading seems like a pretty big deal to me and, you know, the compliance with the state laws, this might be drastically modified before.
It would be exempt from that state law because of the high fire zone, correct?
And again, that, that's for an individual homeowner, this is a subdivision. They can't, they can't do SB nine on all their lots and have six hundred houses.
But what, what I will say is that generally, the developer puts the application forward. As long as the application is complete, we have a duty to bring that to you as a hearing body. But you as a hearing body have a right to give feedback. And, you know, we'll go through the formal hearings, you can continue items, you can direct things. So I think what you're saying is there's a lot of issues, it sounds like, that will need to be worked out. And you're flagging some of them tonight. And I think the purpose of what we're doing tonight is to help staff identify your concerns, but also the developer, the applicant to, to hear this and to daylight this. So I suspect there will be some work that goes on after this so that by the time it is presented to a hearing body, a lot of these issues we talk about tonight will be addressed.
I'm good.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public. Can you please state your name for the record and where you live?
Sandy Anderson. Just before this last slide came up, there was, I think it was the one just before this. It's, it said some of the positives for all this. And one of them that it said was, it would be positive if we, if they built a, it was about the water. And this water that's coming from this pipeline, it would be positive in that, see, see down there, it says, wastewater improvements, discussing pipeline from water wastewater plant, useful if no further development occurs. Does that mean only the one fifty homes?
No, uh, yes.
She's nodding her voice, yes.
I'm sorry, yes, I was saying that we would have some disposal for wastewater after the one hundred and fifty homes.
But only, only with the hundred and fifty homes, not once, so there we're gonna have a problem after that. And useful.
I think what it's saying Sandy is there is a benefit to the city if it stops there. And then there's a benefit to the city, further benefit to the city if it continues. So am I right, Tom and Aaron? So what, what Tom's saying is as they're, and I think they, you know, they, they made it clear to us that it's all still, they're still working it out, but I think that they're.
Okay, I just thought it meant, it meant that a hundred and fifty. And the last thing, a hundred and fifty homes or however many could generate cash flow to enable the rest of the project. That means they're not doing anything about helping us build a new sewer plant as the previous people were, is that right?
Not in this phase, but in the future phases, that would be part of the conditions.
If they, if they continued.
Correct.
There would be connection fees for each individual.
Correct, but I think there would also be discussion. Correct, but I think there would also be discussion about, again, the specific plan says they will build a tertiary plant. Whether that was feasible or not, I think the discussion is on future phases, there would be contributions to the new wastewater plant.
And I realize that it helps us if we can get rid of our wastewater on a golf course. But I'm just going to say this, this, probably none of you agree with me. Golf courses continue to be a negative in the, as far as natural resources are concerned. Water, everything else around it, habitat, everything. And take a look at what's happening in Ione. That's my, all I have to say.
Thank you, Sandy. To clarify, Tom, the 150 homes, the pipeline and the wastewater disposal wouldn't be on a golf course. That would just be on ag land.
Well, there would be no golf course.
Yeah, so.
Madam Mayor, Council, Greg Burdini with Morton and Mattel, representing the landowners that are here with us this evening. Appreciate your time tonight. Just wanted to respond to some of the questions that we heard. Really what we're asking for is taking what was Phase 1. And Phase 1 originally under the original specific plan was over 500 plus or minus units. It included the golf course and a lot of things. Well, we broke it into a smaller phase to implement it. Development in 2005 was a little different than it is today. The other component of that, there's only 150 sewer hookups. So we can't build 500 homes until we work with the city to solve the sewer problem. And so this 150 units is just part of what was Phase 1. Breaks it into a smaller component, but allows us to work with the city, get the effluent line to the property. Because we can't construct the golf course without the effluent line from the wastewater treatment plant. So as we looked at the project financing moving up forward, we can get project financing for the 150 units because there's sewer hookups for those 150. We could not finance the entire Phase 1 due to that lack of sewer hookups. The utilities we're proposing are still consistent with the original EIR. It's a matter of just evaluating. The plan has always been to help the city with the sewer and get that affluent to the property. As far as the grading and all that, there's a general grading zone that allows us to grade. It's only a small, a portion of the 150 units, it's in a restricted grading zone. So we would just work with staff, heard your concerns on trees, but I think the solution is there. But with that, I'm available for questions, as is the ownership group.
Well, don't go far. I think there's gonna be a lot of-
Anyone else care to comment or ask a question?
I'm Greg Boracco. I live on Eureka Street, Federal Conservancy. Just first off, wanted to clarify the size and scale of the 1B phase and how many homes that consists of. You mentioned five, originally Phase 1 was 500 homes. There was also a 300 number kicked around. I just wanted to pin down how many homes are allowed under 1B, which triggers these additional-
I, I believe the 1B, because we haven't seen a map, is an additional 150 homes plus the like hotel vacation rental unit. So that might've been what was included in the 500 that Greg just mentioned? Yeah.
You have that phasing map, Aaron, that had the green? So under the original specific plan, Phase 1 included the golf course, but it also included villages A and B, which are the two north villages up on the upper right. It also included homes along the golf course in the middle, which was Village E. So what we were talking about on Village B, 150 units. The second portion of just that part of the project was another 150 units.
And that one, so that 150 homes would trigger the, in the proposal anyway, would trigger the rest of these conditions. Tertiary plants, trails, golf course, all coming at 300 homes total? Is that the idea? Yeah.
Yeah, the trails are not a 1B. That port, a large portion are constructed with 1B, but the trails actually go all the way around the entire project. So the trails in the original specific plan came on as development goes to the west. But yes, Phase 1B would include the remaining improvements in Phase 1, which would be the golf course and a portion of the trails along with those additional homes.
I guess the other thing I'd like to raise is updating of the environmental documents. Conditions have changed substantially in the 15 year period. Two things that immediately come to mind are of course traffic, and I need to update the traffic studies that go into these assumptions for improvements. And the other one is clearly water supply and the fact that AWA is rapidly approaching capacity at its tenor treatment plant. And raises the obvious question of where the water for Phase 1 would come in terms of providing treated drinking water. So is, what updates to, I guess, what updates to the environmental documents will be, do you anticipate as part of this?
So at this point, we are thinking a traffic analysis and biological resources is what we would like to see. What we will ask for prior to saying we have a complete application to bring forward.
And water supply?
And so when, we will need AWA to review this and they'll probably provide some comments then, and that may be one of their comments also. And something we'll look more into.
All right, thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Albea, Sutter Creek. I'm trying to get a sense of size of what a 5,000 foot or a 6,000 foot lot is. And for the golfers in the group, when you drive from 5 to 6 at Castle Oaks and you see those homes as you cross the street, any sense of what those lot sizes are? And I'm looking at you because I figured you might know. But anybody? Pretty close to the same size? Okay.
You, you can go on maps and get those numbers. Yeah, I'll try to do that.
And just to clarify, at full buildout, this is 800, 900? I mean, I've heard Phase 1A, 150, Phase 1B, 150, and then the rest of it is that projection?
Yeah, so I think in the specific plan, I want it's 1100, no, 13, 34 units. And they have since, they are scaling it back down to about 900 it with the, when the whole project is built out. So about 400 units less than what they originally were planning on doing.
Thank you. So does that change? Does that change not matter in terms of EIR considerations and that kind of thing? I know it's less than, but so then that's, then it's a who cares kind of thing?
If they were going the other way, that would be a different story.
It's not who cares, it's that the environmental impact was already studied because it's less than-
Yeah.
And it's less than that level.
And then really, if this first project were to, to happen and be approved and get the map and start to be built, whatever second phase, as long as it fits within the specific plan, we really don't know. You know, it could, could and probably should change based on the economy and conditions and everything else. So, you know, that's all kind of theoretical, which again, brings me back to wanting to make sure that if it's truncated, we're okay where it leaves us with one phase at a time. Anybody else?
I did want to note that former council member Peters did provide comment at about 5:00 PM. And so I believe our planner received that, and so that will be-
They all, you've all received it.
You all received that, so I just want to acknowledge you did receive written comment.
In an email?
An email.
Five, let's see. I have it sitting here.
You know, our, our packets go out a week ahead of time, so we will include letters in the next packet. You know, you guys can take a look.
Dan, I don't, I don't see you on it. I don't have anything.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it out for the next meeting.
Can you please use the microphone? We're recording it and there's probably people on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Robert Lanfear Jr. and Tim Bullock's staff is here as two owners of the property. We have one of our joint property owners here and we're excited about being in Sutter Creek. And I can tell you that some of the changes and why the application was pulled before was in concert with what the city is wanting us to do. So this application has been ongoing for about four years. And I can tell you the changes that, the direction that it was changed from city, from city staff, from the old city staff to the new city staff, they've been wonderful to work with. They've been absolutely a godsend. They haven't changed their minds. They've given us some suggestions. We went down that road before and then they said, oh no, we're not going to do that, start over. And we've started over twice and it's very expensive with the people that we employ and the staffing that we have. So we want to get this project rolling. And the first 150 is actually what you have available for sewer hookups. And it's going to take us about four or five years to develop those first 150 lots. And by that time, between with us and the city, figure out what they're going to do with that darn sewer plant and how they're going to raise the money for it. I know we're going to be partially responsible for helping with the sewer plant, but we can't do it all. Some of the numbers they were throwing around in the beginning was unbelievable. And, you know, this, this project can only support what it can develop. And if the costs are so high to develop the project with the sewer plant, then the project won't go forward. There's got to be a reason there you haven't developed a lot of houses in this area because of some of the costs that are involved in doing so. But we're excited about being here. My wife is from California. She wants to move back here really fit, really, really bad, and I can't wait to be here. So thank you very much for tonight.
Anyone else care to comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to council if you had any.
So again, without stating absolute positions, I think we'd really like your impressions on phasing, on the grading. Those are probably the two biggest. If you, if you have, you know, something you like or don't like, it'd be helpful to hear.
I, I just have it short and sweet. The grading is a concern just with the erosion and the, the density of the lots. That's, that's a concern. So I need to get, you know, affirmation that it's not going to cause any further erosion. Two is the tree removal. When you're talking about the number of trees and then-
13 acres.
Yes. Can then how is that balanced out with the number for every two acres removed, one acre is saved?
I think for every one acre removed, two acres is saved. And I mean, they do have a lot of open space on this property, so there, it was, I believe it is being mitigated there. But like I've said before, we need an updated tree plan out there to see how the grading is going to impact the actual trees that are out there. Not just the canopy area, because that's what dictated the mass or the restricted grading zones to determine really how much they're removing, what is being removed, what can be saved.
Because when you remove a tree, you're obviously disrupting the whole area and the ground around it. So if you're talking about that size or that amount of tree removals. The other thing is trying to balance or justify, you know, 40, 50, 60 plus year old oak trees, you know, with a new tree. That, that's not really for me an easy trade off. I would like to see some movement towards the number of trees removed, have that reduced and be able to maintain still some canopy in the area of those trees for two reasons. One is for the shade, you know, two is for the loss of erosion.
So we, we can't really determine that with the information we have right now. What will be there and what will may be remaining, what, what will be removed? And that's why it's something we're going to ask the applicant for.
So that would be some specific information I'd be interested in.
Thank you.
Susan?
Yeah, sure. And thank you all, developer folk, for being here and for all your guys' work on this. Yeah, for sure, that tree removal deeply concerns me and we're not even thinking about 30 to 40 year old trees. We're thinking about 100 year old trees or 200 year old trees. And I don't know if any, all of you are privy to the oak mitigation up from the bypass where the, is it Erickson Ranch now? Because exactly all of the trees that were planted died. The grading concerns me. I do like the density. I think that's great to do a smaller neighborhood and have people closer together. I think that's okay. And even maybe beneficial if it leaves more of the land open. I think taking that 8.4 miles of trails out of the first phase would be a real detriment to the community. I think that was really one of the best things that that, opening up that space, because we really don't have open space here. We don't, we do have the back roads, but we're trying to mitigate that already with traffic concerns. I mean, there are corners if you walk to Amador City that you could get killed at just the wrong moment. So I think taking that and putting it on the second phase would make it so it would not necessarily guaranteed it. And that would really be the, one of the best benefits. Aside from adding more housing, which I do think that we have room for growth. And then also someone had spoken to me with regard to the development in Grass Valley in Nevada City. And those communities have become really vibrant and they talked about one of the reasons that was is because the access to that outdoors. So if we're not adding that younger demographic and incentivizing why they would want to live there, it's, I think that would be another reason to think about opening up that land.
I've heard some of my concerns already voiced, but one thing you commented on, Susan, was you wanted, you liked the idea of the density, which is in order to get that density and not remove the trees is pretty, remove some trees would be very difficult. But, and I'm, I have some concerns about the grading, but is it possible to kind of give us some actual real visual examples of what this finished grading might look like?
Yeah, so Matt and I did spend some time kind of flying around on Google Earth, finding subdivisions that we thought might look similar. And I think if we want to come up with those, we would probably take some time to figure out their lot sizes. See if we could find the maps that were approved with the, the slope so that we knew it was an accurate representation.
So actually Greg, I don't know. I mean, again, as we get to a certain phase, are renderings possible specifically to the property?
I think it would be cool, Greg, if we could get, I know, I'm sure you guys use, okay, Greg, I'm sure you guys use Civil 3D for grading. It would be cool to build your surface and then you can do 3D renderings kind of with, with Civil 3D to kind of show the-
Yeah, we can do 3D rendering, it is Civil 3D. Just to intermit on some of the questions, it's currently based on the previous data, we are doing the tree surveys. And we've estimated, based on the tree data that we do have, for this phase of the project, it was 38 trees that were being removed of the trees, and I can't remember, there's well over several hundred out there. And they're not all here, there, a lot of them were mainly like eight or 12 inch breast diameter heights. Now that's best based on data that's, you know, 20 years old. But as you know- But as you know, oak trees don't drastically grow. But we are having that all updated, so we can tell you exactly how many trees are being removed.
That's the kind of information I'd like to see.
Yeah.
Cause that's a, not a bad ratio.
Yeah, and, and that's kind of the, one of the reasons we're here tonight and trying to get this application even complete, make sure we're on the right page. Cause as you can imagine, all these studies that were mentioned tonight cost a lot of money. And we do want to have a, at least an idea of the direction we're headed before we expend any more money than we already have.
Dan?
I don't have anything to add. I'm looking forward to more information.
Uh, sure.
Mike Kirkley, Sutter Creek. I, I just had the question, is the, is the 150 lots right on the property line? You're going to need a fire safe plan for this. In my previous li- life, working for Cal Fire, you need a fire safe plan. And if you build right to the property line, you're going to burden the landowner next to you with doing fuel reduction versus having a setback where you can manage your own fuels. So I suggest you, you, I don't want to catch the developer at the last minute to develop a fire safe plan. But ingress, egress, fuel management.
And that is a requirement of the specific plan that they have a, a plan like that? Yes, well, thank you.
Good point, Mike, thanks.
Yeah, and that brings up something that we should think about. Cause I know one of the problems with the Palisades fire in the Los Angeles, that the entire neighborhood is now gone, was that the homes had all been redone and they were so close together that the fire just went from one to the next. And there was no stopping it.
I don't really have anything to add, I think I said plenty. And it, you know, brings it back to, to previous discussions in this meeting about, you know, with the planning commission and the council and what we need to consider. And, you know, we need to make sure if each piece of this is approved, we're left whole.
If, if I could, I wanted to just briefly go over the concerns I heard so that the applicant hears them. Make sure we have them clear, so we have some direction moving forward or some comments moving forward. So grading and tree removal are concerns from what was presented tonight.
Connected with a potential erosion.
Yes, and a, and erosion. And that more information is needed with the tree removals also. That the highs, the higher density, the housing stock is something that is appealing to the city. And that the trails extending through the project are a benefit to phase 1A. And maybe should not be pushed off to a later phase. And I think those were kind of the big ticket items, concerns that I heard this evening.
Lack of an indoor aquatic facility.
Uh, high school. What, did you put down the fire safe plan, the setbacks?
Well, so we have a requirement in the specific plan that they come up with the emergency preparedness plan. And the fire department will review it. And Tom pulled up this map. So you can see there is a little bit of a buffer around, well, actually nevermind, those plot lines do go to that red project boundary line. So it, it, it is something that the fire department will be an active participant in reviewing those plans. Most likely that will be a condition of approval. So before they could get their final map, they would need to have that fire safe, emergency preparedness plan in place, signed off, ready to go. Yes, so they would. The fire department, I mean, he has been, he will be helping to review and, um, the whole, the project in general.
All right, well, thank you, council, it's a good discussion.
Thank you, Erin, for all your work and thank you for, for coming, for the information.
Thanks to all of you for showing up and wanting to know what's going on, and I'm sure you'll all stay involved. Okay, item 10, mayor and council member reports. Dan?
I'm okay.
Julia? Jim? Susan? Uh, city attorneys report? Future agenda items? Anybody?
I think Tom captured them earlier.
Okay, um, we don't have a closed session even though it's on here, right Tom? Nope.
No, no items.
Okay, we're, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, did we do future agenda items? I missed that. Okay, I'll tell Tom.
Okay, see you tomorrow night. Corned beef and cabbage.